So everybody just.
What, what? Are you kidding? You've got to control your voice. That's why I don't sit on that side.
Well, good morning, everyone. It is now nine o'clock and we do at least have a quorum here. So I'm going to ask that we, it's nine o'clock. And we do want to begin to be prompt in our matter. So we appreciate those that are here. Good morning to everyone. This is a special call meeting and it's regarding the budget workshop for today. And so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. The agenda has been published and submitted to everyone in advance. So are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, we're waiting on the speaker system. Yeah. It's not on up here either. Do we need to get IT for help? Okay, we're going to give it a few, you need a few seconds. Meanwhile, we'll welcome everyone to today's meeting and we'll, it sounds like we're on. Testing, testing. Okay, very good. All right. Okay, just give me the cue. Thank you. Okay, well, thank you. Well, again, good morning to everyone, to today's called Budget Workshop Meeting. Today, again, is an information-only presentation that we'll hear from our county manager. And I understand that we may have a change to the agenda. Was there a change to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am, Chair Wood. I would like to ask the board to amend the agenda so that we can give an update on the coronavirus. I know there's been a lot of information that has hit the media in the last 24 hours. And just wanted you all to be aware of some next steps, upcoming committee meetings, and then just what we're doing from a county level. So if you don't mind, if the board will amend the agenda, I'll ask our deputy county manager, Brad Johnson, to come up and make a presentation to the board on that.
Okay, well, we have a request to amend the agenda to give an update on the coronavirus. Do I have a motion to accept that recommendation? We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor of that amendment? Okay, we now will accept a motion to accept the full agenda, including the amendment to the coronavirus, the proposed budget updates, and all of the other announcements. The floor is now open to approve the full agenda. We have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor. Okay, the agenda is approved as amended. So, well, I'll ask that you do so immediately because I'm sure that's the top of everyone's thoughts. So again, Brad, I assume that you're the one that we're going to receive the update from.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and good morning and happy rainy Tuesday again. This morning, just a quick update. Not a lot has changed other than our procedures and our response. However, there has been a lot of change in the significance of the Corona or COVID-19 activity in our state as it has increased and as expected to increase as testing becomes more available and testing becomes more prevalent. In all the cases, we do expect a spike to happen throughout. So currently, as you know, we've definitely got, we had our stakeholders meeting last week. Our COVID team will be meeting tomorrow at 1:00 as our local task force. And it's just to look and make sure we're covering everything. Our stakeholders include the Board of Education, the private schools, Henry County Government and the cities. And we're doing this through our local emergency management team who covers the entire county and municipalities as our, as our go-to spot for information. And they are district, they are in direct contact with District 4 Health. District 4 Public Health is actually our leader in this and they have the full, they are responsible for the emergency support function for public health. And we'll be using their guidance along with the state and CDC. And they're in constant contact. We also have several contacts with some, some local businesses. We've actually reached out and do have some, some planning meetings scheduled with some of the high-risk facilities in our county. We'll leave them, you know, unnamed. But just to make sure that we're assisting them and their preparedness and if they have any issues in reporting. We have changed our dispatch, or actually about four weeks ago, we changed our dispatch protocol. So we ask to be patient. If you call 911 with flu-like symptoms, they'll ask you questions before they send, you know, the amulets and, and make sure that the questions are screened before medical responders are sent. And that's just to make sure we have the right equipment and right protection level for our first responders also. County and as for Henry County Government, there, we've increased our cleaning of our workstations. We've introduced, I should have made sure we had wipes and sanitizer in our workstations and our work environment moving forward. The state of Georgia did, started today operating their state operations center to assist the state health system and logistics and coordination. So that is a resource also we've, we're in contact through emergency management with every day. So general consensus is continue to wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands. Isolation, I recommend that in the large gatherings to limit exposure. And if you're sick, stay home. If you're sick, stay home. I think that's huge. That goes for everybody, not just our, our team members, but our team leaders also. If you're sick, stay home. And we'll get through this. This is going to be a lengthy event. It's not like a snowstorm or a tornado event or something that comes today, you see it, it goes away tomorrow. We're going to be, we'll be in this process for a little while and for weeks to come, if not months to come. So I'll answer any questions or anything you guys might have directly related.
Yes, could you remind everyone where to keep up with up-to-date information and what our communication team is doing?
Sure, our communication team, we put out daily situation report internally. Externally, you have District 4 Health, also CDC. We're transmitting everybody to the CDC website because they are the leader. We want one message to go out and that's the message we're relaying is that it's, that's part of the CDC website. So that's the biggest, that's the big issue for information is the CDC website. And stay tuned for social media, but make sure you use the right resources because there's a lot of false information out also. But make sure that, you know, your resources are reliable.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
My question is, what are we doing internally to prepare if some of our workers have to work at home or if we have to have meetings from home or from satellites to continue the functions of this government? What are we doing now to prepare for that?
So Commissioner, as you remember, after our event in July, we started preparing heavily. We had made it one of our threats all along, contingency of operation planning. So we have that developed. We've had training on that in the last six months. Part of that plan is to have your agencies do a decreased workload, workforce, and what happens if that, if that does? We have, make sure our VPNs are in place, our IT team, IT technology team is make sure that we do can remote in, we can have distance meetings. In fact, we've limited now that even us having meetings together is more of a, either phone call or, or a virtual meeting. Now, we do have identified what vital areas because everybody can't work from home. We know we have some functions that have to continue on. But for the ones who can, if we get to that point, how do we make that work? We've also introduced a policy for personnel that would, that relates to the coronavirus and how if you're exposed, what that policy will be through human resources. So we have been making sure, our EMA is coordinating today, actually to finish up. We have a few departments that have not actively submitted their, their COOP planning worksheet that should be done by the end of business today. But we have definitely been actively working on finding that alternative way of doing business.
Does our software Tyler give us the ability to have our workers log in from at home and also be able to capture the fact that actual work is being done?
So I guess it does not basically check your work. It does work by productivity. Productivity on any work schedule, even here at work, is about the amount of work being done, it's not a grading sheet listed. The issue we have at Tyler, you have to VPN our network. You can't just get on anybody's network to get in for security. We don't want them to do that. So we do have secure computers that can virtual network in on a virtual network server that can be used. However, it's not globally because we don't want everybody to use their home network that is insecure to get into Henry County. But we do have capacity for the key players and the vital records, payroll, finance, to be able to do that.
Well, I know that there is the ability to do something very similar for workforce.
It is.
And that software is very sophisticated. It can tell whether or not you're sitting there working on something and not just have your machine on. I know some people who, that's all they do is work from at home.
Sure.
And there's a software process that actually tags the, the productivity, the amount of work, the times in front of the machine. It's very sophisticated.
Yes, ma'am.
So my question is, again, the software we have, Tyler, does it put us in a position if we have to have that type of thing done? Can it deliver, basically?
The question, the answer, Commissioners, I don't know. We have not had a need to police our productivity on our workers from a distance before, but we'll check on that and I'll have your answer by the end of the day.
You know, we know that Fulton County has gone to some extreme measures because of the school system being contaminated. And now their students are out and they don't know how long. And so will there be a way for observers to observe or listen to some of our meetings? Will they just have to get the video after meetings, after we do maybe some type of internal meeting? Will it be a video available for them or will they be able to chime in live? How will that be done?
On our commission meetings?
Yes, if that's necessary.
I think if it's necessary, it could be a limitation of who comes in the door and we're live right now. So that can.
I know what you're talking about, if we have to do this separately from homes or something of that nature. We have to have a meeting that's separate and we all chiming in.
We could, we could make it through our WebEx communications to do virtual meetings with you guys. You guys have priority for doing business in Henry County. That is definitely a party that we can make happen.
Okay, thank you.
So if I get out of that, the law currently doesn't allow that to happen, but we'll work on, I, we'll work on a workaround for that as well to see if the need arises, if we can accommodate it.
Well, I'm sure the law didn't expect this.
Right. And I'm sure it didn't. But that's, but, you know, we're stuck with the law as it sits today. So we'll work on it to see if that need does arise that we'll be able to continue to conduct business.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and that does bring up an interesting question. If there is a state of emergency declared, I guess that law still prevails in that case because we definitely will need to potentially have to pull a board together on different matters. So, but again, we just need a strategy plan, I guess is what we're saying, if something like that happens. And we, as a board, need to convene in some form or fashion, whether it's phone or whatever, and then how do we make it transparent to our citizens, I guess is what we're talking to, talking about. But it's how do we communicate virtually if necessary? Okay.
Brad mentioned the COOP plan, which is our continuity of operations plan, which outlines what would happen if we got into a situation like that. I assure you that if there was a need for an emergency action to occur, that would be handled at our level and we would certainly, by local declaration that's issued through the Board of Commissioners and signed by the chair, we could proceed with that. But in terms of video conferencing, we do have the capabilities of doing that. But Patrick is absolutely correct that we would need to change how, how we do business in terms to make that happen. Right now, if there is a need to disseminate that information, we're going to continue to disseminate it through our emails, through phone calls, and making sure that you all are getting the information that you all need. But rest assured, we have a plan in place that if something were to occur, if you all aren't meeting, we won't be here at all as well. So we'll definitely work through what that looks like. But we'll provide you all with that COOP plan so that you can have an idea of what that includes and how many players are at the table when we start talking about emergency situations.
Okay, I think Commissioner Clemens had a comment, then we'll come back to Commissioner Thomas, and then I have a comment as well.
Sherry actually answered it. And if there was a resolution that we needed to do to go ahead and give them authorization to proceed with county business, then we can do that or put a resolution in place. Patrick, according to our rules, if there is a state of emergency because of the coronavirus, but I don't think we.
Yeah, well, it's not our rules, it's the state law that governs us. So, you know, we don't have the authority to override that state law. I'm going to have to work to figure out what the, what the expectation, because I'm sure that the state has some expectation.
I think some officials, if he gets to that point, the governor has led it, led us to believe he would definitely call a state of emergency. I'm not sure if that dictates anything. If Patrick can check on that for us, if that state of emergency changes anything in the way we do business. So from the state level, not just our state of emergency.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
Additionally, we have a lot of public facilities. So my question is, and I'm not sure, we may have to go back to Patrick. What type of posting are we required to have in all our public facilities of what we're doing and what the expectations are for people coming in and out of this building, coming in and out of a rec building? What do we have in place and how are we managing that?
So I think for our high-risk areas, the tax assessors, they're one of our highest risk, but they deal with so many people every day. They deal with more people than any other part of the local government with tags and taxes and stuff every day. And they do have signs posted. They are, have cleaning stations. I spoke with the tax commissary yesterday about even getting them, they should be wearing gloves that, you know, when they touch the, the different currency and just having interaction with so many, many people. We have talked about when to pull to trigger our senior services. That's a high-risk population. The average age of people who have passed away from the coronavirus is 80 years old. So at some point, we will have to look at if it starts affecting Henry County as to, you know, limit the exposure to risk. So what does that do when we have to, to our community? We have to make sure we feed them because a lot of people come there for food. So we have to rearrange it. And a team is already looking at who's going to need to be transporting food to their residents to make sure their, their wellbeing is taken care of. So each department is already, and I was on the phone, just sort of came in here with our fire EMS team about the contamination of amulets and personnel. And Chief Phillips is briefing on, on their process they're doing. And, you know, they're very much likely. We, Chief Amerin, we met yesterday about making sure the police officers wear the latex gloves on every call, not just on the, on high-risk medical calls, but on every call you touching somebody, make sure they have latex gloves on, not just, not the leather, leather gloves. So every department is working on their specific details and, and how they would operate. Then it goes back to how do you operate on a skeleton crew? Okay, even the essential services, how do you operate when 25 to 35% of your workforce cannot come to work that day? And how do we, what do we do? And it goes back, we change our operations. We take personnel, it might be eight to five personnel on a desk or doing other functions that are certified, they move back to doing patrol positions. They move back to riding emergency service apparatus instead of just, we suspend our inspection. We suspend different services to make sure our essential services are functioning properly and sufficiently. So I think we're, we're ahead of the game, I think, talking to other people around the state. And we have a good team that, that can make that happen.
Again, one other thing too, and I'm not trying to be.
No, ma'am, I have no.
Overbearing with this, but I am very concerned.
Sure.
And being concerned because I've been in education and been around children, seniors in groups. Have we considered for those areas that are high-targeted, like you said, the tax assessor's office, looking at some type of air quality or air cleaning machine that can go in those areas as well to help with the circulation of air? I know that they are out there. One of the things they said about the airplanes, realize that the air is going through a filtration system that's helping with the whole process.
That's right.
And there are some out there that you can put in different areas. And I would certainly hope that you would look in some of the high-risk areas and determine if we need to start considering air quality in some areas. Because some areas have no windows.
That's right.
They have only ventilation systems and that's about it.
We do not have anything in place at this point to scrub or clean the air. We call it scrubbing in our business to scrub the air. However, we have been, in fact, yesterday it froze us out because we have been circulating more, just turning the air over, getting fresh air in from our systems that we have, our current AC, HVAC systems, to make sure we do have not to stagnate, it is actually continued circulation. You have a great point that it does need to be turned over, the air needs to be rotated or moved out. And as talking about airplane does every 60 seconds, you have a completely transitioned the air, on the news was talking about it. But I would definitely look and see if, what, what's out there for that type of, for that type of service. I do, we do have some, in our public safety, we do have some, I actually have one machine that actually sterilizes the air, but it won't, it does not do large area. It does amulets in, in one room. But as for a, a large facility, I'll check on that, Commissioner.
And please, if you will, try and see from the water authorities what mailings they're still sending out. And usually it is to seniors who have not converted over to digital mailing, to see if we can use that as a way to send our information to our seniors about what we're doing, what the county is doing to make sure we stay safe and ahead of the game. That would be a great way to make that happen for that targeted population.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you again for at least giving this update. Appreciate all of the preparedness that is going on. And we've seen you operate any, you know, state of emergencies before. And so again, just let us know what we as a board can do to make sure that you get what you need.
Yes, ma'am.
Take care of our citizens. So thank you again for that update.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll now move into our next update, which is the purpose of why we're here today, which is the presentation of our FY 2020, 2021 proposed budget. And so again, we welcome our county manager, Ms. Matthews, to begin that presentation.
Thank you. And again, good morning, Chair and Board members. This morning, myself and David Smith will tag-team our presentation to the board. Just wanted to do a quick recap in terms of how we got to this point and then what the final recommendations are that will be coming from the county manager's office. Just as a reminder to the board, a budget letter went out to all of the elected officials, all of our departments on January 7th, and that actually outlined our budget schedule. As of the 7th of January, all departments were requested to submit their budgets back to our finance team by January 24th. And then from January 24th until present, we've had several meetings, either internally with every department or workshop meetings with the Board of Commissioners, where you all have had an opportunity to not only hear the budget presentations, but to hear from the respective departments regarding what their needs are and how their departments function. That was something different that we added to the budget process this year, but I felt like it went really well because it gave the board an opportunity to really understand what's going on in some of the departments. Right now, we are on budget workshop number four. We've already had three workshop meetings with the Board of Commissioners. And as a result, we have come back to the board today with some recommendations in terms of a budget. I did provide to you, I think the clerk did hand out to you all the PowerPoint presentation, if it's too small to see on the overhead. But what you have in front of you is how we built our budget and it's just our general budget summary. Prior to developing a budget, you have to have some assumptions that are made in that budget process. One of the things that I talked about over the course of our three workshop meetings is that our revenue projections were going to be very fluent, meaning until we get to that final number, we could see an increase in terms of what we're expecting in terms of projections for our revenues. So if you'll notice, if you've been keeping up with the PowerPoint presentations, the revenue projection that based on assumptions has been revised to a 7% increase, which is good, meaning that we are continuing to see growth in the county. And because of our local taxes, our digest number, digest growth, and then property reassessments, we are projecting or making an assumption that we'll have an approximately $6.1 million increase. Other taxes are, are expected to remain flat based on our FY 2020 budget, and those include our lost, our insurance premium, our TAVIT, which we, it's called Title Ad Valorem Tax, and then our emergency billing, which is our ambulance billing, that we are continuing to see an increase there. We're also expecting an increase in fines and forfeitures, licenses and permits and other miscellaneous revenues at approximately $1 million. And that's going to be over the FY 2020 amended budget. Just as a reminder, we took the LMEC funding, which is our grant funding from the Georgia Department of Transportation, out of general fund and moved it into the appropriate funding category, which is our grant funding category, at a cost of about $1.8 million. And based on what we will be presenting this morning, fund balance will not be used to balance the budget, which is another plus because I think that's something that the board has said over years, let's make sure that we try to balance the budget with no use of fund balance. And I certainly think that was instrumental in us moving to a higher credit rating and just really having a fiscally strong financial system. Some expenditure assumptions that we've looked at, we've talked about it for a number of months in terms of our employee benefits, they do continue to increase. We did see a health insurance increase of 6.5%. As a reminder, that number initially came in at about 11.5%, but due to the efforts of our staff and our HR and benefits team, we were able to negotiate that down to 6.5%. The pension contribution has increased from 13.9% to 14.1%. And then a commitment to the continuing of the comp and class increases for employees of 1% longevity and then 2% COLA. This is an additional expense of approximately $4.2 million. Now, there were some one-time expenditures that we ended up with this year, and obviously one was the cyber incident, computer maintenance contracts, and then we have seen a huge increase in our property and liability claims. I will tell you that our risk management team is working diligently to figure out how we can get the claim numbers down. We've had a host of training opportunities for our employees. We have a safety team. And so there are some policies that are being implemented so that we can help to drive that cost down. So it's certainly our hope that we don't have that number, again, this fiscal year. But we have had a couple of accidents in the last couple of weeks in terms of us not being at fault, and in some cases we have been at fault, that we certainly expect to have some claims coming in for that as well. And so now we move into the actual recommendations. And again, this was based on information that we received from every department that submitted a budget to the board for consideration and to the county manager's office. And so guided by the assumptions, the FY 21 revenues will exceed the FY 20 amended budget by approximately 7.2. by approximately $7.2 million. Is anticipated that we will not again use fund balance. And we will ensure that the funds will be available for unforeseen expenditures or emergencies, which is the purpose of our fund balance. What we're recommending is that the Board of Commissioners approve a budget that covers 75% of the health insurance costs um, of that 6.5, meaning that we'll pass 25% on to the employees. We're also recommending that we add the pension contribution from 13.9% to 14.1%. We're also recommending that we continue with the class and compensation increases for employees of a 1% longevity. And if you remember, the assumption that was initially made with a 2% COLA, we're only recommending the 1% COLA in this fiscal year so that we can incorporate some additional expenses that we're going to have to include in the budget, which we'll go through in just a little while. This is an additional expense of approximately $3.7 million. The budget also includes the added sheriff's school resource officer positions, which is seven positions at a cost of $311,000, which all of those positions are fully reimbursable. So they are included in the budget. And then some additional positions within the fire department, public defender, magistrate court, sentence enforcement, code enforcement, facility maintenance, tax assessors, recreation, and then additional, the additional fourth judgeship. Um, it may be hard to see on the overhead, so you all should have a copy of this slide. So if you'll just refer to that slide, it gives you a breakdown of what those positions are. Again, this budget that's being recommended does include the fourth judgeship and the additional personnel that are, that's estimated at $611,000. The budget also includes incorporating Saturday hours at the library at a cost of $188,000. And then various other expenses, including the courthouse cleaning and then in planning for our risk insurance, if there is an increase to that as well. And again, this is just the numbers for the fourth judgeship. So I'll now ask you to look at the page that says not included positions. There were a number of positions that were recommended or requested, um, but we've included a list of those positions that were not included in the budget. And at the end of this presentation, we can certainly discuss that with the board if there are priority positions in which you feel needed to be included. Um, one of the things that we did in developing the budget is we took from the board our one-on-one meetings where you all discussed with myself and the deputy county manager what some of your priorities were. And what I will tell you that we heard clearly from the board is that parks and recreation, quality of life, making sure that we have a clean community and making sure that roads are being improved was, was the priority for the board. One of the things that I failed to mention is that the budget also includes an additional $1 million for our DOT department for maintenance projects. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that we're capturing all of your immediate requests in terms of priorities within the county. And then we may go back, um, at mid-year and look at additional positions that were not included. One of the things that we stressed to each department is that we wanted to make sure that we were including items that were either mandated or priorities in terms of continuing to provide the level of service that's being requested. And so if you'll notice under code enforcement, we did add additional code enforcement officers so that we can make sure that we have a full coverage throughout the county. Um, within some of the court systems, you'll notice that outside of the fourth judgeship, there were positions that were added because those are immediate needs that are needed within those respective units now. Um, if you'll recall, I think the public defender mentioned that right now they're servicing four courts and she only has three attorneys and she would like to incorporate an additional attorney so that she can have coverage within those respective departments. Um, I remember Carl Brown mentioned during the sentence enforcement presentation that right now, due to him being short in staff, he's actually having to cover accountability courts and do a lot of the work that his attorneys, um, and investigators should be doing. And so that has been incorporated within the budget as well. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to, well, no, I'm not. Let me, I apologize. I'm going to go through a couple of items that the board asked for some follow-up on. And then I will turn it over to Mr. David Smith, who will go through, um, some additional information and specifically a survey that the county disseminated last week and some of those, um, survey results. During the last budget workshop, there was a lot of conversation regarding the lobbyists that had been retained by the county. And I report, committed to the board that I will report back in terms of, um, what the lobbyist was doing and what that cost would be. Um, I recall during that meeting that the lobbyist's contract had expired, but wasn't sure that it had expired. And I did confirm that the contract actually had expired and the county can expect a reimbursement because those invoices were paid in era. And so we did retain our lobbyist to do the one purpose, which was to make sure that the urban redevelopment, um, agency was created. That was done. And then on June of 2019, that contract actually expired. Um, I will be reaching out to, um, the company because we do want to see if we can move with our TAD legislation in this session. And so I will be reaching out to him, um, this week to see if we could do a one-month retainer or maybe a two-month retainer so that we can move forward with that. Because I know that's been something, not only that Commissioner Clemens has pushed, but just for development opportunities here in the county, we need to have that legislation in place. And so I wanted the board to be aware that we, that was an error that was being made and that those funds will be reimbursed back to the Board of Commissioners' budget. Um, I did mention the $1 million for our DOT and then the library, but I wanted to make sure you all were aware of that. Um, the board also asked for an update on all of the boards that were receiving some type of stipend or monthly salary. Um, I did receive information back from the Board of Assessors and from our planning and zoning department regarding those salaries. And I'll ask the clerk to provide you all with a copy of that information. Um, based on the information that we've received, at this time, we are not recommending any additional increases for those respective boards based on the information. That's been provided. Um, when Stephanie, Stephanie will provide the information to you, but just a quick overview. Um, we did receive from the Board of Assessors, um, in 2001, their salary was $65 per meeting. 2005, it went to $75 per meeting. 2008, it went to $300 for the chair per meeting, 250 for each member per meeting. And then in 2016, it went to $425 for the chair and 375 for the member. The information that the Board of Assessors provided shows a listing of Fulton, Gwinnett, Cherokee, Forsyth, DeKalb, Henry, Clayton, and Cobb counties. And it appears that the numbers, while obviously in Fulton and DeKalb and Cobb, the numbers are much larger, the comparable in terms of the number of parcels and the evaluations is going to be very different compared to Henry County. And so I wanted you all to have that information, if it is the will of the board, to look to increase the salaries for the Board of Assessors. You should also have a listing of Metro Atlanta zoning advisory boards. And if you'll notice, we have DeKalb, Henry, Gwinnett, Clayton, and Cobb. Um, Henry County actually falls right behind Cobb in terms of salaries. Cobb is paying a little over $250, it's like about $270. Cobb is paying 275 for their chair and 250 for their members, where Henry County is paying 225 for their chair and $200 for their member. Um, our zoning advisory board also meets every other month. And so this is a every other month stipend versus a monthly stipend that's being provided. And so again, the budget does not include any recommendations to increase, increase the salaries for those respective boards. I did reach out to the Development Authority Executive Director and he indicated that at this time, they weren't interested in looking at an increase to their salaries. And so that information has not been provided to our staff. Um, other than that, the Water Authority operates separately and so they set the salary for those respective board members. And then the other boards throughout the county, like our Parks and Rec Board, there is no fee for that. Our Council on Aging, there is no stipend that's provided for those boards as well. Uh, what we will do, if it is the will of the board, we can certainly revisit, um, the board stipings after we get through the budget process. And if you all want us to look at the other boards that currently don't receive any stipends, we can certainly look at that as well. But again, at this time, we're not recommending any additional increases within those respective boards. Additionally, um, Commissioner Thomas, I believe, asked for an update on the guardian antelatum, um, information that was presented through our juvenile court system. And they did provide to me a folder full of a lot of documents regarding the process, the number of cases that are being heard. Um, I did do a quick review of the information and from what I've been able to determine, I don't see that a contract was actually signed in 2019. I do have a copy of the contract, but there are no signatures on the contract. But it does indicate that the total amount that's allocated for this service should not exceed $100,000 per fiscal year. And so there is a lot of information that's been provided that I will provide to the board, but I wanted to be sure in terms of what you all were looking for. They've also provided, um, to this office that currently they have 490 open cases and approximately 725 individual children. And so I think Commissioner Thomas, you wanted specific information on the number of children that were being serviced. Um, I also found that they did provide to me a listing of the respective, um, caseload, but there were no invoices that were attached to it. So I don't have a way of determining if the, what the actual amount was. I can tell you that based on the contract from 2019, they are paying $200 per hour for services. But again, that is not to exceed $100,000. So I'll be more than happy to provide to any of the board members the package of information, but didn't want to make duplicated copies of it if you all are looking for something specifically. And I believe that is all in terms of the information that I have. I do still owe the board an update on the salaries for our constitutional officers, but there are a multitude of resolutions that created the salaries. And so we're still going through that information to make sure that we provide you all with the most updated information. So as soon as I get that information, I will provide it to the board. At this time, I'll answer any questions and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith.
Okay, um, any questions? I know I've got one. I saw Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Wilson, and then I'll add, okay, Commissioner Thomas?
Me first?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go back to your presentation, please, Sherri.
Yes, sir.
And let me find the page here. On page three, where you stated that we have claims in reference to Tyler, 1.3 million, I think. My question, what type of claims and where are these claims coming from? Who are we paying?
So the, it's property and liability claims, and that's from any accidents, um, any damage that we've done to personal property within the county. So it's not for Tyler. Um, the 1.3 million is just property and liability claims. So if we've gone down and we've damaged any property or any claims that have been filed against the county, that is the 1.3 million. Um, we had a cyber incident that resulted in about $663,000, but there has been no, um, claims filed regarding Tyler.
Okay. So this, like you said, these are damage to different properties and what have you.
Yes ma'am.
Is that?
National accidents. Yes ma'am.
Combination of all those things. Okay, the other thing is, hold on, I'm looking at my notes. Let's go to page four, please. When you talked about the, um, insurance coverage, 75% to be covered by us and you're recommending 25% be covered by the employees. My concern about that, and I'm still waiting on more information about the class and comp, uh, adjustments that you've made, are we just really taking back from them the adjustments that was made to compensate them to where some of them really supposed to be based upon the class and comp that was done?
No ma'am, that's certainly not the intent. And the board should have received last Tuesday the information from Ms. Señio regarding the appeals. She emailed it out, I think later in, late in the evening, but it includes a spreadsheet which identifies the positions that would have received an increase and what those new grades were. Um, obviously it can be perceived that I'm getting an increase and I'm still having to pay for my insurance. But I think that the flip to that is we're also not only allowing the employees to only pay that 25%, we're still recommending a 1% COLA and a 1% longevity for our employees. Um, we have the wellness center that's an opportunity or an incentive for our employees as well. And so for some employees, while it may appear, you know, we're passing on this 25% increase, it's a very small amount of money that we're talking about when we say a 25%.
Well, that was one of my concerns. I didn't want us to appear to finally be adjusting some of our classifications, um, to meet some of the surrounding counties and at the same turn around and take it back based upon the insurance costs. So that was one thing that's concerning to me and I want us to make sure that doesn't happen in this whole process. Cause that doesn't make sense when we're trying to keep employees here. And I also would like to know, in that report that you just mentioned, will it let us know which ones actually receive some type of compensation or increases based upon their positions? Cause I have received some inquiries, uh, without names and anything saying something is not right because these positions receive nothing. These positions did receive some adjustments. And so our employees are feeling like, um, maybe the class and comp study did not consider them and what they were doing for the county is the best way to put it.
So Commissioner Thomas, I'm going to ask Ms. Señio to come up because one of the things that I wanted to make sure um, is that there was no perception that the county manager's office or any specific person decided on who was going to get an increase. One of the things that I asked the HR team and Ms. Señio to do is to take the names out of it. Look at the individual positions throughout the entire process, which is not how we initially started under the previous, um, administration. Um, because I had a fear that employees were going to believe, because they knew it was Sherri or because they knew it was Shannon, I'm not going to get an increase. Um, one of the things that we want to make sure is that we have a comparable, fair, and competitive class and compensation plan. And so a lot of the burn in terms of determining what the employee was doing or what the employee's job included was put not only on the department head, but on the job description that was provided. And so if you don't mind, I'll ask Ms. Señio to walk through what that process is because I think it's a very fair question. And I understand employees are upset. The ones that didn't receive anything are going to be upset. But from the onset of the project two years ago, one of the things that we talked to all of the employees about, we had town hall meetings, we had department head meetings. We explained that everybody's not going to receive something and it's just based on what the job entails. And so if you'll let Ms. Señio kind of talk through that process, then we can come back and I'll ask any other questions that you may have.
Yes, good morning, all.
Good morning.
In reviewing the appeals this last cycle, we did not review appeals that had already been addressed in 2018 or 2017 when the process initially began. We also did not review appeals that had already been deemed unjustified, I'd say. We only went with those that were approved by the previous HR director, but had no action being taken on or they were still questionable. With that, we outlined each of those positions. We met with department heads and/or their representative for each department that held that position. With, what I'm saying with that is it, I'll give the position of an administrative assistant one, just as an example. There may have been one administrative one in the county that appealed. We looked at every department that had an administrative one position in the department. We asked all of those departments to meet us at the table. Each department was provided the job descriptions for that administrative one position in advance for their review and comment. We all came together to discuss the roles and responsibilities of that position. Based on those conversations, we made determinations collaboratively with all those present, if those roles and responsibilities lined up with the job description provided by the consultant, if the grade was fitting for the level of work and responsibilities, what the expectations of that position was. If not, we then discussed where there needed to be changes. This resulted in not only grade changes, there could have been some title changes, and there also resulted in some job description changes, such as minimum requirements. And please let me know if that answers the question or if that actually brought up new questions.
Well, it did answer my question. And there again, I'm just trying to understand the process, having come in, in the middle of it. And I am asked those questions and I said to the, um, the, uh, the message that I received, that I will ask the question and see what's going on with it. So there again, I just don't want us to put us in a position where we've given some increases and look like we're turning around and taking them back through insurance. So I was very, very concerned about that.
Sorry.
The next, thank you, you've answered that.
Okay.
So the next line, um, Ms. Sherri, under, where you have the SRO positions and you have $311,000, which are fully reimbursed, um, cost to us. But what about the benefits of that? Do we get reimbursed for the benefits as well?
That is the entire salary, including benefits.
Then the next question would be on that, who bears responsibility if anything happens with those SROs?
That would be the county.
The county.
Yes ma'am.
And these positions are in the school system, correct?
They are actually in the sheriff's department. So these are school resource officers that are under the sheriff's department. But they serve, um, their role is to be within the respective schools.
I think one of the questions I've asked before is why we've not transferred that responsibility to the school responsibility to the school system, the liability, the cost, everything. Is there a reason why that has not happened?
We have actually, I think when you initially asked about it last year, we actually went to see if we could determine if there was even an agreement in place. And we've been unsuccessful in even locating an agreement. I think it was just something that was agreed upon with the sheriff at the time, and I'm not saying it was Sheriff McBrayer, I'm not sure who the sheriff was, but that decision was made to provide that service to the school board. I think one of the arguments that the school board makes back, and I'm certainly not putting words in their mouth, is that the positions are 100% reimbursable. They are paying the county back. But I hear what you're saying in terms of if that officer is hurt, the liability falls on the county. And so that's just the non-rent agreement that's been in place. If that's something that the board wants me to have a conversation with the superintendent about, I certainly will. I will tell you that we have talked over the last year, just in general, about the school board and specifically the public safety aspect and the roles and responsibilities. But right now, that, that agreement, whether rent or not rent, is under the sheriff. And as a constitutional officer, he has that ability to coordinate that responsibility with the school board.
But I mean, he has the right to do that without any input from us?
That is correct. He is a constitutional officer. The only thing we do is set the sheriff's budget.
I understand he's a constitutional officer, and if this was coming out of his budget directly and he was maintaining this out of his budget, that would be one thing. But this is a totally different budget this is coming out of?
No, ma'am, it is, this, the funds are actually placed in the sheriff's budget, and he administers those funds. So the board sets the budget for the sheriff, and he is responsible for managing and administering those funds. And if he wants to move those funds around, he can certainly do that, so long as his allocation or his bottom line number that was approved by the board does not change.
I know that a lot of school districts have already gone to private services, and they have moved this from their sheriff's department. And I don't see why this county should be held liable for anything that can happen, be an accident with the officer or a claim against an officer for inappropriate behavior as to why we're sitting here allowing this liability to take place. And I do think we need to have a conversation about it and to determine if that needs to take place and need to be moved totally to the school board. The school board has a budget that's almost three times the size of this county. And while we're allowing this to take place, to me, it's not anything that we should do because somebody made a decision, I'll do it. We should be looking at what is best for the county to operate this county, making sure our liabilities are reduced in every area as possible, because the liability may not just be, again, an accident. The liability can be against the inappropriate behavior of an officer, and we really do need to consider that. I'd like to see you have a conversation with the sheriff about it and see what we can do about it. And this board need to have a serious conversation about it as well. I know the sheriff is going out, he's retiring, and that may be something we have to look at with the incoming sheriff as well. But it's definitely a conversation we need to have, we need, that needs to take place. It really is. And the next thing would be, we had a conversation as well about dollars that we've allocated for our crossing guards, and where's that at in this budget?
That is actually incorporated within our police department's budget. That's about a half a million dollars, and those are part-time county employees that fall under PD.
Okay, again, those are services that are rendered for our Board of Education directly, and we are absorbing the cost and liability of having those individuals under us as a county, and we need to address that. They have the ability to compensate them, they have the ability to cover them in insurance, and all the liability that, um, that is possible with those employees. We shouldn't have not, we should not be absorbing that cost. It simply should not be. In lieu of the fact that we need that money to pay our judges appropriately, our judicial system is suffering, and those costs, are they reimbursed?
No, ma'am, those are not. And those are just part-time, so we don't pay any insurance, but we are responsible for the liability.
And we are responsible for the liability of those employees, but they are not reimbursed.
That is correct.
But we have judges that are leaving us because we can't pay them appropriately. We have judges standing before us that's making less than some of our clerks, and I'm very concerned about our judicial system. We have a judicial system and judges that we are paying less than what we're paying clerks in our system.
And I think, Commissioner Thomas, we probably need to schedule a one-on-one because I think a lot of the information that's provided is certainly part of the conversation. Let me say it that way. We have, and I certainly believe that part of the class and compensation study was to make sure that we were getting individuals aligned in the right class and compensation. But as I mentioned during the last workshop meeting, we have had challenges in terms of holding to salaries within some of our respective court systems.
And again, I'm saying that we have money available to really compensate the employees that we are responsible for and should be shifting responsibilities from this county to where they belong. And that county, the county should not have to absorb a half a million dollars in salaries that we do not get any compensation back from the school board. And the school board has a budget of $400 million plus, but we're trying to balance $170 million. It just doesn't make sense. Then when there's no type of contract, no type of memorandum of understanding, just somebody said, "Let's do this" years ago. I'm saying it should be corrected. And I would like to have a follow-up conversation with you, and hopefully this board can have a follow-up conversation about it to correct it.
Absolutely. And certainly if the board directs me to schedule that meeting, I'll definitely get it scheduled so that we can proceed with that conversation. And let me just be clear, school crossing guards and the school resource officers, correct?
Absolutely. Because we're talking about liabilities that we are absorbing and can be sued for if something happens. Even though we're being reimbursed the actual cost of salaries, we're not being protected if there are liabilities out there that we must answer to.
And I think, Commissioner Thomas, that would be the same with any employee, even within our Parks and Rec Department. We have park staff that are interacting with students as well, and I certainly don't want to stand here and say that there has.
But they're our employees, is what I'm saying.
They are all our employees. The school resource officers are our employees.
I'm simply saying, we can shift them to the Board of Education, and we wouldn't have to have that.
If I may, what I'm hearing is that what we need to do is have a, um, an agenda item on the, for the Board of Commissioners regarding school resource officers, so that we can have a presentation, the board can discuss it, decide what we need to do. But there seems like there needs to be a joint meeting again with the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education. I think you all are meeting as staff as well, but somehow we may need to have some discussion that's more global so that we can get a better understanding, and then the board can take action as accordingly, according to meeting, so.
And Chair Wood, just for clarification, last year during the budget meeting, we did exactly that. We had the school resource, we had the sheriff here, and at that time, we were in the middle of the budget process, so if there was a desire to stop that, that should have been incorporated, but I don't think the board wanted to make any changes at that time. But so noted, I will reschedule that meeting again and make sure that we get a joint meeting of the board to discuss the school resource officers and the school crossing guards.
And I do recall that, but it seems like it's an item that wants to be discussed. Okay, Commissioner Wilson has to come in, I've got to come in, and Commissioner Clemmons, okay? Commissioner Thomas, before we go to Commissioner Wilson.
Uh, one other thing on page, where you have positions not included, and you have the DA's positions not included as well?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm concerned about the fact that we've added 20 new officers. We have so much more happening in this county, but none of those positions that he requested were approved.
So Commissioner Thomas, if you'll look on the previous page under the fourth judgeship, there were five additional positions that were added to the DA's roster. And then under the positions that he's asking for, they are to create new units, a gang and homicide unit, and then a gang and homicide investigator. And last year, we did approve the DA for the crimes against children's unit. But one of the things that we're looking at is mandates, things that are currently needed within your respective unit. Now certainly if the board feels that that is something that you all want to proceed with, we certainly can. I do know that the sheriff's department also has a gangs unit, as does our PD department. And so for, for me internally, I was looking more at a collaborative effort. If there's something that we need to be doing, we can work collaboratively on it. But again, this is something that if you all feel is near and dear to the operations of the county in, in creating this new position, we can certainly do it. But there were also other positions that were not included within our building department, our public information department, our planning and zoning. One may ask, you know, with the amount of growth that we have, why not include the planners? But right now, we're in a position where we have a number of vacancies, and so it doesn't make sense to include those additional positions if we haven't filled the vacancies. But again, Commissioner Thomas, if this is something that we need to include and the board wants to include it, what we'll need to do is those, the funds that are allocated for that position, I'll need for the board to look at what other resources are we going to cut so that we can add those additional positions? Because it goes back to what our expected revenues are and what our expected expenditures are. And again, I'm trying to present to you all a budget that we don't have to use our emergency fund, which is our fund balance, but also present to you all a budget based on what I've heard from you all in terms of what your needs and priorities are.
Well, thank you. I wanted to know what was your line of thinking in putting that recommendation before us?
Yes, ma'am.
And there was no way for me to understand it without you at least giving me an idea of what was available to us and alternatives that were available.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, well, surely we can come back. Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
So we're looking at a 75% on your recommendation for your insurance increase?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
75%?
Yes, sir. It's 75%, and then we have other options available. I know Chair Wood recommended 50%. I recall Commissioner Thomas looking at 75 or 90, and I can't remember.
So what I'm asking, the 75% of the increase, uh, with the 6.5 increase, that's just in the Cigna, not?
That is correct. Thank you for that clarification. It's not for Kaiser employees.
So can you give us a breakdown of what, turning percentages into numbers? Because I don't know what the premiums run. I'm not.
Commissioner Wilson, Ms. Señio is going to pull that up. We actually received a revision on yesterday.
Okay, so there's a couple of different plans. There is the single than the family, correct?
That is correct. We actually have three different plans under Cigna. So Commissioner Wilson, to answer your question, currently under the current plan, if you are under the 75% plan as an employee, and I'll just say family insurance, you're paying $74.81. If you.
Per pay period, correct?
That is correct. And then if the county is absorbing 75% of the cost, they are paying $110.15. And that's under the 75% plan.
That's the family plan, correct?
That is family, yes, sir. And again, that's the employee paying $110.15 versus 74.81. And under the 80% plan, employees are currently paying for family, $193.67. Under the 75% absorption by the county, the employee would be paying 232.27. And again, that's under the 80% plan. And then finally, under the 90% plan, the employee currently pays $149.90. And it's, that's Kaiser. That's, that's right, that is Kaiser. So Kaiser is not changing. So 75%, 80% Cigna, and then the Kaiser plan remains the same, because there were no increases with Kaiser.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and, and, and thank you for that question, because again, we appreciate this information you gave to us that outlined that. And what I've noticed is that in either of those scenarios, if there is a 75% coverage by the, if the county is going to absorb 75%, we're saying that under either plan, it's about a $35 to $38 increase for the employee. So that's the point to note.
That is correct.
Okay, I wanted to go back to.
Per pay period.
Per pay period, yes.
Everybody understand?
24 pay periods.
24 pay. Okay, so it's two of them that they're not, okay.
That is correct.
So we do have 26 for 24, it's affected on the benefits.
That's right. And if it would help the board, going back to Commissioner Thomas's question, what we could do is I'll have finance and HR run a scenario for an employee that may have received an increase in the appeals, look at their insurance and see what they'll actually take home after that increase, because we can certainly look at that. But it's going to vary amongst employee, because it just depends on what their increase amount was.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Okay, that would be a great scenario. Okay, anything else? Okay, so that kind of leads to the other question that I had. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Cooper. I did receive the email that, I guess we all did, because it went to all employees, about the appeals process. And then I want to thank Ms. Señio for the response on February 17th about the appeals review and so forth. When I looked at that summary report, I still have a couple of questions, so I'll just schedule some time. But I too have received, I guess, a similar concern for employees, so I want to say thank you for reviewing that process today to clarify the integrity of what we're talking about. But I still do have some questions, so I'll just follow up Ms. Señio on the details of that report. So again, that came to us recently. The other thing is, I knew there was one other follow-up item that I requested, and it was, as we look at this proposed budget, I'm still interested in what total amount that we're going to dedicate to public safety, how much to judicial, because I'm telling, I'm already thinking about how does that correlate to Milich? Because that's where we're going to eventually end up. So if we can, um, provide that, I think that would be helpful. So, but anyways, I think those were the major things. I may come back to some other questions, but I'll go on to Commissioner Clemmons, because she has some, some thoughts as well. Commissioner Clemmons?
Chair, I want to respond to the SROs and the crossing guards, but also I think that this appeal process is going to keep coming back over and over and over again when there are some employees that got the raise, some that did not. Even after the board voted that everybody would get it, there was a process that you guys added in there where it was based on their positions, but it was also based on their performance. And so, so based on what Shannon said, you all looked at a couple of things, okay? That's, that's fine. If that is the way you guys decide to do it, it's fine. But what I'm asking you to do is all of these people who are still, who did not receive the raise and are questioning why, they should be allowed to get a written reason from management why they did not. So I would like for you to send out to every employee, so just send out an email, if you did not receive a raise and you are concerned about it, please request in writing why you did, and you guys should respond. Because if somebody comes to me and say, "Well, I didn't get the raise that the board promised us, and I feel that it was such and such reason why, it was because Sherri or whatever," go ahead and give them a written reason why, because I'm sure that there was a justifiable reason why they did not. But they should have that in writing.
Yes, ma'am, got it.
Okay, that, that clears all of that up. So all of the, you know, the messages that we're getting, "I didn't get it, it was unfair." If you respond, if they have a process with, I don't want employees to feel like, "Well, I didn't get it and now I'm silenced. I didn't get it and now I have no more recourse, so I have to go to the commissioners and tell them." Give them an opportunity to request in writing why they did not get the raise, and then that way they have it in writing.
We'll take care of it.
Um, the other thing is, um, on the SROs officers and the school crossing guards, we had an extensive discussion about that, I know for several years. And I would just like to share with Commissioner Thomas, I did have a conversation with board members about it, and I would ask that you do too. But the thing is, is that we're responsible for public safety in the county, and whether the school board has a police department in place or not, we still have to provide public safety. And so what they have to do is to give us a plan on when and if there is in their plan to get a police department for the school system. And at that time, and I think that's what the sheriff's office was saying yesterday, if we pull out, who pulls in if there is nobody policing it? So I think the conversation needs to be more about what is their plan as the school system grows to be able to govern their own public safety on school property? And how can we phase our officers out at some point? You know, or they just take it over completely? But I think it's going to have to be a phased process based on what we've heard for the last several years. The crossing guards has been something that I've been concerned about, because crossing guards at, at locations where kids are not walking to school, that is in our hands, that's not in the school system's hand. And so what I would ask our staff to do is to evaluate every school that has a crossing guard, because now that we've put up the red lights be, I don't know that we necessarily need that. Because now that we've put up the red lights be, I don't know that we necessarily need that and the crossing guards there. So we may be able to pull off on some crossing guards, you know, maybe shift them to some other openings or some departments, or say this is going to be the last year that that school will have crossing guards. And now's a really good time to look at it for the next school year because there's no need for crossing guards to be out there directing traffic, and we've got officers there. So I would just ask staff to just bring us back a report on, this is how many we have. These are schools that students aren't walking to school. And what is the job description of those crossing guards? If they're supposed to be monitoring kids that are walking to school and no kids are walking to school, then I don't know that we need them there.
We got it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Byrne.
One correction, I would never ask us to pull out services on anybody without a plan in place to make sure those services are covered. So my question, and it's not about up and pulling out anything that would be irresponsible for this board, and I'm definitely not that irresponsible at all. But as she stated, several years, conversation's been going on. If you never put forth some type of plan of action, or put forth a requirement that you're looking for people to work toward, it simply will not happen. And there are school systems that have come out, and they are responsible. The school system is responsible for all the safety of the children. Some of them have private security services, some have their own police services. But they are responsible for them, be it a crossing guard or be it an SRO. They are fully responsible because it is connected to the school system. But I would never ask this board or anybody else to put any of our citizens at risk. But I do think we need to be responsible enough to say, we need to know, in some form or fashion, what is it you intend to do, hear our requirements? And we're operating without a contract, without a MOU, without a understanding. We're just operating. And that type of stuff needs to stop in this county. One of the challenges I place before you is to pull all these floating contracts. We have things that are just taking place without a contract anywhere. Well, that's the way it's always been done. And Henry County needs to stop that. We are paying people because we start paying them ten years ago, and nobody followed up on the contract. The contract is automatically renewed, and we're still paying them. It needs to stop. And that's what I'm asking this board to do, to review what we have out there and determine what is it that we are going to do. And if we decide to keep them, there needs to be a document in place outlining what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. That's what I'm asking for.
Okay, anything else?
No, I'm finished.
Okay.
Commissioner Byrne?
Yes. Going back to the health insurance increase of the six point five percent, have we seen any decline in our increases due to our health clinic?
We have not, but that's information that we've requested. With us just getting into a full year, what we're expecting is that next year we'll have better numbers to be able to bring back to the board and see a reduction in our claims. One of the things I will tell you over the last couple of months, Healthstat does provide reports to our staff in terms of our numbers, and they have been increasing every month in terms of the number of visits to our healthcare facility. And so I would certainly expect that our numbers are going to continue to grow, but also that we're going to start to see some reduction in claims. One of the things that I think we've been challenged with is getting the employees to trust the wellness center. And so what I'm hearing now from employees is, I should have gone eight months ago. I just, I was stuck with my own primary care physician, and I didn't realize that the clinic could offer what it's offering. And so we are certainly seeing a number, and I hope that next year, or at least mid-year this year, we'll be able to provide to the board some numbers, but our claim history is still very high. And what I want the board to think about when we talk about claim history, what I've been able to determine based on our utilization meetings with our providers is it's not really the employees that are driving the claims up, it's actually the dependents and spouses that are driving the claims up. And that's not a negative, but we spend a lot of time focusing on getting our employees healthy, making sure that they're participating in wellness activities. And that's one of the reasons earlier this year, we did a family wellness initiative so that we could get the families out, make sure that their biometrics were in place. And so we're really looking at how do we change how we do business in terms of wellness. But I certainly believe that by adding the dependents and spouses to the clinic where they're now able to go and receive services, that that will help. The other thing is that we've had some really high-dollar claims where it may be six individuals within the county, that they've had some circumstances that have driven that claim cost up. And again, that's not a negative, but when you have four or five high claims, it will drive that cost up.
Yes, and my only other comment would, to try to get Melissa to try to start some type of campaign to try to remind our employees that we do have that health clinic there.
Absolutely.
And see, the other thing, you know, we've talked about the crossing guards, I know probably five, six years, and we've always said, you know, it's not our responsibility. But I don't think you have many kids that are walking to any schools. It's more of a traffic control than anything. And, you know, I would like to see is have a conversation with the school system, to sit down with them and see if we could phase this out or something for them to assume the responsibility of that money. And, and the other thing I wanted to ask you, the library, did you get a copy of the library's budget?
Yes, sir, that was provided to our budget team. Yes, sir.
I would like to get a copy of that.
It should be included in your binder, but I'll get you another copy of it. That's not a problem.
Well, that's all I have. I'm going to have to leave my wife. I got to take her to a doctor's appointment this morning. So I'll chat with y'all later.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else? I mean, this was Sherry's part, or we haven't heard Mr. David Smith's part. So we're moving in that, but I think this was really, really good dialogue and good questions. All right, so, thank you. All right, so if there's nothing else for our county manager, we'll definitely move into the segment with Mr. Smith.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and the Henry County community. I don't know if you really need to hear my part, right? But I did want to at least talk to several things that our county manager has started, not only as she began to improve the way we budget in terms of not utilizing fund balance and improving our budget calendar in the process itself. Our county manager has also improved, continuously improved, our process of receiving input. This year, we're receiving input from our county commissioners. She's also wanted to include input from the community before the public hearings occur. And so as she continues to improve it, I wanted to just touch on a couple of slides from a survey that we did of the community on the internet that just recently closed yesterday. And so in terms of the very important items that our community believes is very important to them, number one is policing. Number two is fire and paramedics. Three is infrastructure. And four is how we manage our tax dollars. So I want to talk about one and two for a minute, which this commissioner, commission itself so astutely provided in our last year's budget, we addressed police and fire. And this year, when we approved our capital plan, it's going to address some of our infrastructure problems that we have. And this budget, in terms of managing our tax dollars, does not include a millage rate increase. So those are the very important items. Now let's talk about what is most important to them. Most important to the community is managing the tax dollars. Again, police is mentioned, which we've addressed last year, and we continue to address, making certain that our police and fire departments have what they need. This year, we included some positions for our fire department. Infrastructure needs, we included the one million dollars for Department of Transportation. And I will be bringing to you sometime this year, before the end of the year, when we talk about our capital plan, resolutions to improve set aside monies for improving our roads. Because that's capital, not general fund dollars that we need to spend. So we asked them, how would you prefer to balance the budget? How would you prefer to balance the budget? And even though we've heard a lot of discussion about development here in our county, the number one item here is increase the development. Because we continue to see our commercial tax base growth, they wanted to see more of that commercial tax base growth. Second was increase user fees. And so one of the things that we're doing is we're revising and taking a look at adding transportation impact fee, which will help us in that area. So we asked them, would you balance the budget by increasing your property taxes? And seventy-two, close to seventy-three percent, it was a resounding no. And so that's why we're trying to present to you a budget that we believe addresses all of the issues as we go forward each year, not only our employees that are here, but what the community wants to see. And that's, that's from the community input itself. And so as you take a look at the financial representation, you should have in your packet what that looks like. And that's what this is, where we are conservatively estimating a growth rate of about five percent over our amended budget in terms of revenue, in terms of our expenses. A very conservative growth rate of four percent for our expenses. But the primary cost of that is trying to take care of our employees, one percent comp, one percent longevity, as well, as well as trying to make certain we cover the health benefit pieces. And that's the financial representation of the report itself. What questions do you have?
Okay, I hear Commissioner Thomas, and I think I've got a couple of questions. Go ahead. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you so much for this report, and thank you for the survey that you sent out. I have to sit here and go, what is this? Because when you put down here the preferred method to balance the budget, and it has increased development, and we sit here and get battered and beat up and battered about increased developments in our area, I'm wondering, how can you get this information out to the public to let them know you made a decision beyond us that you want increased developments in Henry County? That to me, it's very contradictory to what we get a lot of times when, I should say, loud people come to our presentations. And it looks like the, the people who actually pay attention and watch these by video or read about us or watch the developments, they know what we're doing, and they understand the process. And they have basically endorsed what we're doing by saying, bring developments to Henry County so that we can balance the budget, so they can continue to say on the next page, no to increasing property taxes. So thank you for doing this survey. I really do appreciate it. I certainly hope that we can find a way to get this information out more to the public about what they have stated. And if indeed there's an opportunity to open it up a time again, maybe three or four months later or something else, that would be great to see how the public is thinking as well. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, a couple of thoughts that I had. First of all, I just want to continue to commend the improved process this year, meaning that it's very transparent. You're trying to be inclusive in every way with all board of commissioners, with the public. The time scheduled that you put, you haven't missed a date yet that I've seen on this schedule that you've sent out. My question, though, is going to be, we're in a very unstable economy right now. And I know that our budget assumptions were based on some predicted revenues, especially from commercial, industrial, property taxes and so forth. But I just asked that we began to thinking about another model, just in case this impact of this coronavirus takes a deep dive into the recession. And so I know we've already talked about mandated services, and we've spoken about what's important and not. But I just asked again, I know y'all are probably already thinking about it because y'all have been ahead of many of the questions today, and I appreciate that, which means that you are preparing a lot. But I just think that we need to think about that from a budget standpoint. I think when I heard our deputy county manager speak today, I don't think that this whole impact of what we're seeing is going to go away anytime soon. So again, I don't know what that looks like. I just think that we've got to begin thinking about a critical need, mandated needs, and there may be some other things that we have to think about as it relates to projected revenues as we go forward. So I just, again, just ask that we keep that in mind and so forth as we go forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other thoughts or questions from the board? Okay, that's all that we have. I know that I may have some other questions. I appreciate this information that gives us a chance to study and to maybe ask some more questions. I did hear, again, from this board that we definitely want to begin having some serious conversations about the crossing guards. So I think that that definitely is something that we heard today. Again, there still needs to be some discussion. I know I'm going to have some personal questions. I guess it'll go to Sherry and the HR team regarding the appeals process because apparently we just want to continue to become educated about that so that we are able to. And I did think that it was a good idea to, for those that did not get a, you know, an adjustment, to have some information communicated back to them. I would be definitely in support of that. I'm just trying to think of anything else, but I just encourage our board to continue to engage and ask the questions, and appreciate y'all bringing this information forward. Commissioner Thomas?
Please get that information back to us that Commissioner Clemens had requested in reference to leases that are out there for the county. That will have an impact in this budget. What type of leases out there? What are we receiving? Where are they in this package? Because I couldn't find them. Are they grouped under another name? So we need to know. The other thing is, I made a request about contracts. We want to know what contracts are out there, what type? Who are they? Who are we paying? I want a list of them. Who are we paying? What type of contracts are out there? How long have they been out there? Is it a contract? Or is it, again, somebody said, and we're just paying people? Want to know that, because that will have an impact on this budget as well. We need to fine tune our budget and close out some things. And just because it's always has been that way, that needs to change. So please help us find those type of dollars and make sure that we are, as is stating in your survey, that we are spending the taxpayers' dollars wisely, and we are watching those dollars. We should have never, and I'm very concerned about the lobbyist that you mentioned. He knew we were paying him. He should have stopped it. He should have said, you know, our services end in June of 2019, and you guys are still paying me. That's an honorable thing to do. You need another lobbyist. And I'm concerned about going back to that person? When that person did not tell us, and now you're recouping that money from them? I'm concerned about that. I really am. So apparently he did not have us at heart. And we may need to look to say, we need another lobbyist. So if we do pay him for six months of services that he didn't deserve to get that money, he would have called us and said, hey, Ms. Sherry, you notice our contract ended June of 2019. I got a check in July, August and September, whatever. We may want to check that because I would like to come back and serve you guys again. That didn't happen, and I am concerned about it.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens, and I've got a comment.
Sure, let me just say on the appeal process, don't request them to send anything. Just go ahead, and you know everybody that didn't get it, right?
No, ma'am, I don't. And that's...
Okay.
So I have to get HR to send that out.
Okay, but HR knows, right?
Right, and they sent letters to every person. They received a formalized letter indicating what the process was.
Yeah.
And so I have no idea who the individuals are.
Shannon is there now. Let's ask Shannon.
She's brought the letter.
Shannon?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a general letter that went to everybody, or was it individualized to why that person did not receive it?
So it was not individualized to why that person...
I asked for an individual letter, because everybody's different why they didn't get it. Everybody was different from why they didn't get it. And what I'm trying to do is to create issues for later. I don't like the fact that people are saying, well, I didn't get it because of this, or I didn't get it because that. Shannon don't like me, Sherry don't like me, Brad don't like me. Let's give them specific reasons, each individual, why, because you all looked at their case. You looked at their, you evaluated everything, and then there was a reason.
Yes, but we did not look at the individual. We looked at the position across the county. So if we found that that position...
So if it's me, based on your position, Commissioner Clemens, you did not meet such and such, such and such, or we made this decision based on such and such, such and such, just do it. Because it's going to eliminate...
So if you don't mind, you have been provided a copy of the letter. This is a form template letter, so it was filled in with the individual's name and the individual position. And it says that in review, we found no discrepancies. There were no discrepancies found between the actual duties being performed and the current requirements of the position. As a result, the position was not recommended for reclassification.
So let me say this.
Yes, ma'am.
In this final phase, job description, job titles, classifications, all of that could have been listed down and said, based on job descriptions and check, you were ineligible. Based on daily roles and responsibilities, you were ineligible. Because this is so general, a person looks... Because this is so general, a person looks at this and say, well, I had the job description, why was I not given it? Uh, you know, I had the job title, I had the classification, and then you come back and say, well, because this person's not doing the daily roles and responsibilities, we're gonna reclassify their job and put them into another job. You need to say, you were reclassified. It is, it's just, you have to be real clear with employees because what happens is, they can then use, okay, it was these other reasons, and then we are gonna be the ones that have to deal with if it's a lawsuit based on, um, you know, discrimination or, you know, whatever.
Understood.
So it is, it's so much in there, and I've dealt with employees that have, you know, quit, went away, filed stuff so much that I understand how important the documentation is. If it's job classification, why, if it's job description, why? Whatever one of those reasons are, that employee needs to know that was their reason. Because what they're complaining is, is that I had the job description, I had the job title. One person says, I was reclassified, so I couldn't get it. Well, why did you reclassify them? If you reclassified them because they were not meeting the daily roles and responsibilities, now, I don't, I'm not saying you were, but those things, every person has a right to be, that be explained to them.
And.
And they shouldn't have to come to me for the explanation.
Understood.
Because I entrust you all to do it, so I'm just saying, just please, just go back. It's not gonna be a lot, and I don't, I don't want, I don't want it to appear that you're hesitating to do it.
No.
Let's just get it done.
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you had some other shit, okay. Okay, okay, all right, um, Commissioner Wilson, I'm sorry.
So I think some of the issues with the people that wasn't compensated any, um, raise is they have been in a position for like twenty-five years, the same position. They had topped out in that position, so when the new class and comp study come on board, they was at the top of that scale. So, uh, I believe a number of those employees fall under that portion of that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And for a number of years, what, what has happened, when things were really, really well in Henry County, there were some departments that if they attended a conference and brought back a certificate, they received a raise. Well, everybody didn't get that same benefit, and so they continued to, their salaries continued to increase. And then when the class and compensation study was done, the job description was reviewed based on, and keep in mind, one of, a part of the class and compensation study fell on the employee. So that no one could say, my department director doesn't know what I'm doing. So every employee was required to do what we call a performance analysis questionnaire. And that was your opportunity to roll out the red carpet to show everything that you're doing, even it's, even if it's above and beyond your position. And so all of that was, um, consolidated, provided to the consultant, and then they provided that information back. But we have absolutely no problem sitting down with every employee who feels as if they don't have an answer.
I'm sorry, wait, 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 Commissioner. I was in a pinch with what I was doing, but go ahead, what I was doing, because I was still, go ahead.
And so, and I think some of the misunderstanding of how this worked was, you have people that come to work that's been here for like five years, they got several promotions through the process. And so they may be, they may be at a supervisor level. Then we have people down here who's been in this position at the, on the lower scale for twenty-five years. These are the people that may be concerned about why they didn't get this. But these people come in and had promotions, and they worked their way up to supervisors. And so that is, that's part of it as well, correct?
It is, and the longevity aspect of it is too.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Gump moved too quickly ahead of Commissioner Clements, and I apologize, but I'm sorry.
And Sherry, you can clear all of that up by not having that subject to opinion and conversations, put it in writing. You gotta put this stuff in writing. And when they come in and, and it says that, you know, we're available to answer any questions. So then they come in, they ask questions, and then it's all verbal. You guys have to make sure that when they come in and talk to you about it, that you don't let that employee leave without something. And even if they did not get the, um, the raise, you can give them something to say, if you meet these criteria in that position, it will make you eligible. So those are the type of things that will be helpful from an HR perspective.
Okay, and I'll make sure that HR does exactly that.
Well, uh, and if I'm reading this report that you all sent to us, was there about fifty appeals, I guess is? Uh, anyways, I, I think this is the information that we have, and again, I'll just follow up afterwards because I just had some questions. But this information that we received does kind of outline some things, but I think it's all about communication is what we're hearing, so.
And, and Chair, I would ask that if the board has specific questions regarding the appeals process, that you schedule those meetings with Ms. Seño. Because again, this was a process that the county manager's office purposely stayed out of because of perceptions that, you know, something may be perceived one way or the other.
Okay, fine, okay, um, my other question, uh, went back to, um, I guess, the legislative agenda that we have. I just encourage our, um, commissioners, I know we've mentioned that we may want our, the lobbyists, if we move forward, to focus on the TAD. But there may be some other legislation, um, that we may want, um, the lobbyists to focus on. Um, I know that one, on those short-term leases, we better pay attention to that one. Um, because it seems like, you know, the legislature is trying to preempt on home rule again, um, that we can't as a local set up ordinances or, um, guidance about how short-term leases should be here. So I know that that's one that I think that we need to pay attention to and have our lobbyists to make sure that we've gotten our thoughts about as well. But again, just encourage the commissioners, if you've got some other items that you see out there, that we, send those to Sherry so that she can maybe help us formulate some items to focus on, okay? I think Commissioner Thomas had some other thought.
Yes, and I do want you to consider what I stated about whether or not we need to, um, look at another lobbyist and put out another request to look at lobbyists. I am concerned about that.
Absolutely, and I haven't noted.
Yes, another thing too, in all the recommendations we've received from you, I didn't see anything in here in reference to departments. Uh, we at a point where we need to merge some departments, that we need to cut back on some departments. Have we looked at anything like that? We got a lot of recommendations, but nothing in reference to departments and our services. And I know that there is kind of a like, oh, don't look at things like that, but we don't want to hurt people. But we do have to look at, in this day and time, and the money we're putting in Tyler. Would we ever get Tyler working, oh gosh, um, properly? What are our actual needs?
So Commissioner Thomas, and I've heard you a couple of times mention Tyler and, and the effectiveness of it. Um, we are on board, on schedule in terms of Tyler. Um, your paycheck actually comes through our Tyler system. So our go-live dates where we've had to push some back, we've been able to push forward with it. We are moving swiftly to get that implemented. Now, in terms of the consolidation of departments, um, I don't see a need to do that. When you have a county government that's growing or a county that's growing at the rate that we're growing, and the services and, and the demand on our services are increasing, um, it certainly would make sense to eliminate any departments and consolidate, consolidate at this point. Some of the things that we are looking at is outsourcing some of our services where we feel that, hey, we need some extra hands on deck. Um, specifically landscaping is always a big deal for this board during the summer hours. And so we have looked at outsourcing that, and we'd look at it every year. We do a contract, um, every year with a provider that goes through our purchasing department to outsource that. Uh, one of the other things that we've talked about in our parks and rec and on the parks and rec list, um, you'll notice that we did recommend six additional positions for a half of year. But one of the things that Mr. Penn mentioned is that in the, uh, in the event that he can't get six people, then some of the things he's gonna look at for some of our parks is outsourcing some of those park services so that we can maintain our parks that we haven't been maintaining. And so we are looking at other options internally, but I'm certainly not recommending to this board that we need to consolidate any departments or eliminate any positions at this time. Um, I certainly think that if the economy goes in a different direction and our permits are driving down, then yes, we will look at some options like that. But the reports that Mr. Patterson provides that I forward to the board every month shows that we still have a very growing, um, community in terms of permits. I think right now, we're actually getting ready to issue the permit for the development in your district off of, um, Broder Farm. That permit was actually issued this week, and they're getting ready to start on the development for that. And so there is still a lot of services and needs that are needed. One of the things that we do need to revisit though are some of our fees that we're charging. Um, and I'll specifically talk about transit. Right now, I think we charge two dollars to ride our transit bus. You can't get gas for two dollars. Well, you can now, because I've noticed on the news there were some areas where gas went down. But that, that is something that we're going to have to revisit. Some of our planning and zoning fees, some of our occupational tax fees. And so one of the things that we may have to look at is increasing those fees. And if this board will remember, one of the things we talked about with Mr. Patterson is we actually had a study done to look at services and the fees that he's charging for specific services within his respective unit. So I think there are other opportunities that we can look at for revenues. I mean, you mentioned this morning, you want us to have a conversation with the Board of Education regarding crossing guards. That's a half a million dollars that we can go back and look at maybe implementing into the budget. And so there are some resources that we can look at. And we have done a really good job of trying to pull in groups for energy efficiency audits, looking at resources like that so that we can incorporate that within the budget. But again, I want to be loud and clear that there's certainly not any recommendations in the board regarding, or in the budget regarding the consolidation or elimination of departments.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, okay, Commissioner Clements.
I'll be done after this. Sherry, um, the five hundred thousand for the crossing guards, if we, um, don't do that in the July budget, because that'll take us through the school year, we already have it in it through the school year, then we can u- utilize that money for the summer months, those, uh, intersections for the grass cutting. So, um, I know that's one, and I, and I think our citizens want to see the funds come back into the communities and we're doing stuff that they can see why, where their tax dollars are going. We've been looking for that money, there it is right there, because everybody's complaining about the mediums and the grass, and especially during the summer months.
Got it, thank you.
Any other comments or thoughts? Well, okay, well, um, I need to find the agenda, I pulled it in here, I'm sorry.
Yes, I just want to go over the upcoming budget meetings, Chair, and then I'll turn it back over to you. So we do have, believe it or not, we are almost there. Um, we will advertise our public hearing for our budget on March twenty-seventh. And then this board will have its official public hearing at nine AM on April seventh. We will then publish another budget adoption, and then we will bring to the board on April twenty-first a public hearing and an adoption of our fiscal year twenty-one budget at six thirty PM. You all should have received an email from the clerk on yesterday changing the time for the meeting. Initially, we had it at nine AM, but we have a board meeting that same evening, and we wanted to give everybody an opportunity to come to a public hearing in the morning and the evening. And so you will not need to be here at nine AM, you'll just need to be here for the six thirty budget meeting. One of the things I want to make sure, um, between now and March twenty-seventh, is if there are any recommended changes, we need to know that, um, at this point. We've talked a lot about insurance, and right now, I'm not gonna make assumptions, but what we're recommending is a seventy-five percent, um, pass-through, or seventy-five percent that the board absorbs with a twenty-five percent pass-through to the employees. And so that's what we're recommending unless I hear back from a majority of the board that you all want us to look at other options. Um, the pension is, again, is something that we will continue to recommend because I think we've got to fund our pension for our employees. And then again, one change that we've made in the budget this year, we've typically done a two percent COLA, but we're only recommending a one percent COLA. So if it is the will of the board to look at the COLA and increasing that amount, then we certainly will revisit that. And then finally, not to continue beating the same conversation, but just as a reminder to the board, for those employees who may not be receiving the one percent for longevity, the COLA does go to all of the employees who are full-time county employees. So they will receive that one percent, unless the board advises otherwise. Other than that, I stand ready to answer any questions that you all may have, and I'll turn it back over to Chair Wood.
All right, well, thank you, and thank you again. Are there any additional comments? I think it's been good dialogue, good conversation. Um, again, board, this is information about our budget that y'all wanted more details, so I'll hand this out to y'all. But is there any other business for the good of the board? Okay, here are none, we will call for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion?
A second.
And a second, any other discussions or comments? All in favor, okay, consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you, and thank you all for those who are tuning in.